Good afternoon, Mr. President. Good afternoon, distinguished delegates. We have only 20 participants at this point, sir. So we should be waiting for a few minutes. It's 2:54 at this particular point. Distinguished delegates... Hi, Murat.
I can't hear you, Jordi.
You start joining us.
I can't hear you.
Hello?
I could not hear you.
I was informing you that we only have 20 participants at this point, that we still have five minutes to go. Yeah?
Yeah. Okay, no problem.
So distinguished delegates, as you start joining us, please do remember to place the name tag of the country that you're representing before you in capital letters ideally. Similarly, with UNDP colleagues and colleagues from other agencies, if you can, please rename yourselves and identify your inscription in capital letters before your name and surname. That would be appreciated. So we'll give it five more minutes. It's 2:55 at this particular point, and we will start very soon. The distinguished ambassadors and permanent representatives and deputy permanent representatives are also kindly asked to please indicate PR or DPR when relevant after the name of the country. So first, name of the country in capital letters. Second, PR or DPR, and then your name and surname. Thank you.
Buenas tardes, Óscar. Bienvenido.
Good morning. Jordi, ¿cómo estás?
Hola, Andrés. ¿Cómo estás?
Hola. Buenas tardes a todos.
Distinguished delegates, as you start joining us for this afternoon session, kindly remember to place the name tag of your country in capital letters before your name and surname. Similarly, the colleagues from the agencies as well are kindly requested to rename themselves with the inscription of the agency and name and surname. We should be starting in a couple of minutes. We are at 38 participants. We will be giving a little bit more time to delegates to start coming in. Thank you.
Okay, Jordi, it's 3 o'clock, so I think we're going to get started.
Yeah, it's 3 o'clock. You have 47 participants, sir.
Yeah, so we're going to get started.
Okay, we're all yours.
All right. I declare open, colleagues. Good afternoon and welcome to the seventh virtual meeting of the second regular session for 2020 of our executive board. I declare the meeting open. We will continue this afternoon with the UNDP segment of the agenda, items eight. Evaluation of the board will be considered. The following reports will be... The following reports will be considered. First, the annual report on evaluation 2019, document DP/20/13, and the management comments or commentaries. And then the evaluation of the UNDP Development Corporation in the Middle East, in the middle-income countries, and the management responses to that, document DP 2020/21 and DP 2020/22, respectively. Joining us this afternoon are the following people on the podium. Mr. Ding, Assistant Administrator and Director, Bureau for Policy and Programs Support. Ms. Margaret Thomas, Chief Effectiveness Group, Bureau for Policy and the Program. In support then, we have in support of them is Mr. Oscar Garcia. We know Oscar is the Director of Independent Evaluation Office. Mr. Arnold Haig, he is the Deputy Director, Independent Evaluation Office. Then Alan Fox, Mr. Alan Fox, Chief of Section Corporate Evaluation and Independent Evaluation Office. So that's the team that would be on stage or in the virtual stage, I guess, with all of us. To get going, I will give the floor first to Mr. Garcia, to Oscar, the Director of the Independent Evaluation Office, to introduce the annual report on evaluations. And Oscar will be followed by the evaluation of UNDP Development Corporation in middle-income countries. So, Oscar, you have the floor.
Mr. President, excellencies, distinguished members of the executive board and colleagues, a very good afternoon to you all. Since this is my first time addressing the board, please allow me to take the opportunity to thank you for the warm welcome I have received. I am honored to have been entrusted with the responsibility to lead UNDP's evaluation function, and I look forward to a fruitful and strong collaboration building on the foundations led by my predecessor. I joined UNDP as the COVID-19 crisis was unfolding, challenging societies and the global development agenda in unprecedented ways. In this context, the relationship between the operational activities of UNDP and the development results achieved on the ground needs to be strengthened, and you can rely on the capacity of my office to support you as members of the executive board in discharging your oversight function. Today, I am pleased to present you the 2019 Annual Report on Evaluation, including the findings from our independent country program evaluations, as well as the evaluation of UNDP Development Corporation in middle-income countries. The 2019 Annual Report highlights the work undertaken by the Independent Evaluation Office to evaluate UNDP's work globally, as well as our work in support of UNDP efforts to promote a culture of evaluation, transparency, and learning. The report summarizes the status of key strategic initiatives and contains a brief analysis of actions that UNDP's unit management has taken in light of recommendations from the office. 2019 was an extraordinarily busy year for IEO with implementation of 38 independent country program evaluations, as well as considerable preparation for five thematic evaluations. The country program evaluations undertaken accompany the new country program documents being presented to the board during this session and will support the direction of UNDP at the country level for the next four to five years. IEO has been very ambitious, has a very ambitious program of work for 2020-21, which includes the evaluation of UNDP's work to support countries dealing with climate change adaptation and conflict, fragile context, and UNDP's approaches to integrated resilience in response to migration crisis in Syria and Venezuela. These three evaluations will be presented at the board's first regular session in January 2021. IEO has also started the conduct of the evaluation of UNDP's strategic plan, as well as a joint evaluation of the GEF, UNDP Small Grants Program. My office will undertake consultations with stakeholders, including executive board members, for its next multi-year evaluation program once the current strategic plan ends in 2021. The annual report on evaluation gives an update of UNDP decentralized evaluation function through our analysis of implementation scope and quality of the decentralized evaluation reports, an important and recurring subject of discussion by the executive board. Four related challenges guide our response to improve the quality and utility of decentralized evaluations. Firstly, the coverage of decentralized evaluations, where currently 43% are related to the global funds, GEF in particular, as these are mandatory evaluations. Secondly, the planning of decentralized evaluations and their completion rates remain, on average, at 55%. Thirdly, the resources for decentralized evaluations are currently at 0.5% below the 1% benchmark as per the UNDP evaluation policy. And lastly, the quality and credibility of decentralized evaluations and their use for management decision and resource allocation requires further attention. With regard to building a culture of evaluation, the Independent Evaluation Office has made concerted efforts to improve it. The evaluation guidelines were revised, and several regional training workshops were organized with monitoring and evaluation staff from the five regions. In June 2020, the IEO also launched an online training course integrated into the UNDP Corporate Learning Center, which is now mandatory for M&amp;E staff, and over 150 UNDP staff have already completed the course. Supporting national evaluation capacity continues to be a priority for us. In early 2020, IEO and the Independent Evaluation Group of the World Bank signed an agreement to join forces and promote coherence in support of national evaluation capacity development. All countries need the capacity to design evidence-informed policies, monitor their progress, and evaluate their impact to achieve their national development objectives, cope with global crisis, and reach the sustainable development goals. This initiative aims to respond to this demand through an international platform that brings together a range of national, regional, international stakeholders. The operationalization of this important initiative is underway and is galvanizing the interests of other important bilateral partners and academic institutions. The position of the IEO of UNDP in this global initiative is a testament of our commitment, in particular, through the success of the National Evaluation Capacities Conference, which have grown to become the largest global evaluation conferences in terms of government representation. And we will continue to report progress on this global partnership evolves. Before moving to the presentation of the evaluation on middle-income countries, I would like to report on some of the steps IEO took in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. The IEO has adapted its program of work by working remotely, digitally, and exploring different data collection methods and approaches to ensure our evaluations remain rigorous and credible. Given the unpredictability of the situation, we have reprioritized our program of work for the year. Based on a thorough feasibility assessment, the work plan for independent country program evaluations was revised to tackle the reality of conducting evaluations during the pandemic. ICPE coverage was reduced from 27 to 16 evaluations. The 16 evaluations will be conducted, will constitute a good sample of programmatic work, thus promoting accountability and learning across the organization, and constitute important building blocks for more aggregate type of evaluations. Technical support is being provided to country offices where IEO canceled its evaluation, assisting them in their own implementation of an evaluation of their country program. The program of thematic evaluations will remain unaffected. The reorganization of our work plan has enabled the office to realign its resources to engage with and respond to the emerging priorities revealed during the pandemic. This includes the preparations for evaluations of COVID-19 response and recovery efforts and the development of reflections, a series of rapid evidence assessment that offer lessons learned from UNDP response to previous crises based on evaluative evidence. To support UNDP prepared for, respond to, and recover from the COVID-19 pandemic, the first series of reflections offers lessons from UNDP contributions to the health sector, social protection, livelihood restoration, and job creation and governance. And this, as a knowledge and learning tool, this synthesis seeks to inform decision-making at headquarters and country level. The reflection papers were broadly disseminated to all UNDP resident representatives through various communication channels. They were also translated to all UN languages and were shared with UNDP through webinars to promote further dialogue and engagement. Now, Mr. President, with your permission, let me turn to the evaluation of UNDP Development Corporation in middle-income countries. As you are aware, mix are home to 75% of the world's population and represent about 1/3 of the global GDP. Mix also play a crucial role in the implementation and achievement of the 2030 Agenda for Sustainable Development. The pledge to leave no one behind requires addressing the need of the poor and most vulnerable, the majority of whom live in mix. Mix also have an important role to play in powering South-South and triangular cooperation through their sharing of good practices, trade, and investments. Due to its strong country presence, UNDP is uniquely positioned in supporting countries' progress and graduate to mix and high-income country status through the development and implementation of sustainable development policies and strategies, as well as facilitating learning and knowledge transfer across mix in order to accelerate the achievement of the SDGs. The evaluation examines UNDP programming in middle-income countries through an evaluative lens of relevance, effectiveness, efficiency, and sustainability, and assess more carefully the positioning of UNDP in mix, its contribution to development results, its business model, and partnership strategy. The evaluation focuses attention on interventions implemented at country level between 2014 and 2019. It covered all 84 middle-income countries based on UNDP classification, and it has 28 findings with five conclusions and recommendations for decision and action. In this regard, the evaluation found that UNDP has contributed to the achievement of development results in mix. Programming approaches around the 2030 Agenda on natural resource management, climate change and energy, financing for development, and private sector engagement are the most evident demonstration of UNDP's adaptive ability, as well as a progressive positioning at sub-national level to support last-mile implementation challenges. However, among the most salient conclusions, the evaluation found no particular distinction between programmatic approaches in mix and other countries, and did not identify distinct engagement strategies within mix considering the huge diversity in socioeconomic performance and productive assets. Related to the absence of a differentiated strategies, the income-based allocation for core resources among mix does not consider countries' needs on broader human development dimensions. With the shift in development financing opportunities that occurs with the transition to mix status and exposure to global markets, countries are exposed to new risks and increased vulnerabilities as they contend with old and new challenges. The reduction in regular resource allocation to UNDP country offices in mix reduces their capacity to support national governments as they deal with this challenging transition. The evaluation recommends revisiting this aspect of the business model to articulate a differentiated programmatic approach based on human development parameters and a financing strategy that supports the transition of newly classified mix along with other measures aimed at supporting UNDP's position in these countries. Another important conclusion and recommendation offered in the report is on the area of private sector engagement. The evaluation noted a progressive evolution of UNDP approach and engagement with the private sector. While the overall resource mobilization from private sector funding has remained small, its concentration in few countries have proven useful to support country offices in mix transitioning into a full-cost recovery model. The evaluation covered some successful examples of private sector partnership ventures at small scale, as well as cases demonstrated unmet or partially met private sector expectations from UNDP. Challenges in the capabilities of country offices may cause reputational and financial risk when engaging with the private sector. The remaining conclusions and recommendations of the evaluation pertain to the need for UNDP to consolidate and sustain its positioning in middle-income countries in areas central to its comparative advantage, namely poverty reduction, environment and climate change, and the governance portfolio. In closing, distinguished delegates, the COVID pandemic has exposed and amplified existing vulnerabilities and inequalities at all levels of societies at an unprecedented scale, posing a significant threat to development progress achieved so far and to further progress towards the commitment of the 2030 Agenda. The rising level of internal and external debts, the limited fiscal space and access to ODA will weigh heavily on the ability of mix to recover from the ongoing crisis and its implications. With UNDP's leadership on socioeconomic recovery in the overall UN response, UNDP will remain an important partner in mix, facilitating the uptake and scaling of good practices and of innovative development solutions. It will become increasingly important for UNDP to ensure optimal capabilities and thought leadership to curate and accelerate knowledge transfer and innovations at country level to support countries to remain on course towards a more inclusive and sustainable development pathway. I thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcia. I now give the floor to Ms. Ding, Assistant Administrator and Director, Bureau for Policy and Program Support, to present the UNDP management response. You have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Excellencies, ladies and gentlemen, distinguished members of the executive board. On behalf of UNDP management, I would like to first thank Director Oscar Garcia and his team at the Independent Evaluation Office for the work conducted in 2019. The NDP appreciates the collaboration with the IEO and looks forward to continuing working closely together. I will make some remarks on UNDP's management commentaries in response to the annual report on evaluation, and then followed by an outlining the management response to the evaluation on UNDP's development cooperation in middle-income countries. UNDP continues to invest in becoming a more results-oriented, evidence-based organization. An essential step in strengthening the evaluation function was the launch of the revised evaluation guidelines in January 2019, supported by regional workshops to strengthen the capacity of monitoring and evaluation personnel. Another milestone was the adoption of the revised evaluation policy during last year's second regular session. I'm pleased to note that UNDP's financial investment on evaluation increased by 16% from $22 million in 2018 to about $27 million in 2019. to about twenty-six millions in two thousand and nineteen, although it is still short of the one percent performance expenditure invested. I also note with pleasure that that the IEO has received its budget allocation in line with the evaluation policy in two thousand and nineteen as well as in two thousand and twenty, reflecting the increased budget allocation benchmark in the twenty nineteen revised evaluation plan. Challenges in adhering to the financial benchmark related to the, relate to the decentralized nature of the NDP's program evaluation budgets. Consistent with our cost recovery policy and procedures, locations for decentralized evaluations are required to be included in program and the project budgets, and this is where more work is needed. The NDP's completion ratio of planned evaluation remains static with fifty-five percent of planned evaluations being completed in twenty nineteen. We recognize that our ambition has been higher than our actual performance and as we previously noted in this forum, it may not be realistic for usual planned five hundred evaluations to be completed each year. The NDP strives to produce good quality decentralized evaluations and indeed based on the IEO's annual quality assessment. The percentage of reports considered moderately satisfactory, satisfactory or highly satisfactory has remained relatively constant over the last three years at around seventy-five percent. In two thousand and nineteen, seventy-three percent were rated as moderately satisfactory and satisfactory. And we take very seriously the fact that twenty-six percent of the quality assessed evaluations were of unsatisfactory quality. The NDP finds a quality assessment valuable to improve the quality of its evaluations. In the two thousand and nineteen assessments, the NDP, its ability to address cross-cutting issues improved along with developing solid terms of reference and the evaluation design, including links to national strategies. However, we still needed to improve the usage of gender-responsive methodologies, draw better linkages to the SDGs and include discussions on risks. To address these issues, we have launched an initiative to establish a vetted roster of evaluations experts, which aims to provide the country offices access to quality evaluators with relevant language skills, while also providing efficiencies from individual procurement process. The NDP has also strengthened its program appraisal committee review of new CPD evaluation plans in line with the new evaluation guideline and continue to encourage strategic and forward-looking planning for evaluations and the management accountability for evaluation performance. The NDP is committed to improving the relevance and effectiveness of the organization's learning, programming and the decision-making from evaluation evidence. We recognize that the twenty twenty will be a different year in light of the impacts of COVID nineteen on our capacity to undertake evaluations. We appreciate the guidance that IEO has issued to support the country offices to think about how to take, to take forward evaluations in these circumstances. The foundation we laid down together in two thousand and nineteen with IEO, with the board, the support of the board, along with the measures I've outlined, will strengthen our evaluation capacities and culture. In this regard, we also look forward to the deployment of IEO's regional evaluation advisors and we will continue to analyze and reflect on how evaluation in evaluations inform changes in our work and contribute to organizational learning and improve the performance. Let me now turn to the evaluation of the NDP's, UNDP's work in middle-income countries. The NDP welcomes the evaluation of its development cooperation in middle-income countries and notes the important findings where the NDP can draw lessons as we move forward towards the next strategic plan. The NDP's management's response highlights the complexity of middle-income countries. The income type typology group remains very diverse, covering seventy-five percent of the world's population. And despite general optimism regarding their continued progress, middle-income countries do face a combination of growing challenges that could reduce their long-term growth and stability progress and prospects. Middle-income countries are home to sixty-two percent of the world's poor with persistent pockets of poverty and growing inequalities as many in, middle-income countries struggle to transition to high-income status. And I'd note that most of the small island developing states are middle-income. So in line with the strategic plan twenty eighteen, twenty twenty-one and the twenty thirty agenda, the NDP has supported the middle-income countries to eradicate poverty while addressing the economic, social and environmental dimensions of sustainable development and the building resilience to crises and shocks. A quick look, look, reflection on the evaluation findings. Noting as a complexity of the country context we operate in, the NDP is pleased to note that evaluations positive findings, especially concerning the contribution to development results across the signature solutions reviewed as a part of the evaluation, that is poverty, governance, natural resource management, energy and the climate change. In addition, the evaluation noted that the NDP's gender mainstreaming has contributed to gender results and our, and our work with the private sector has helped attract private capital for development programs. Key evaluation conclusions speak to the NDP's added value and the relevance to the development challenges facing middle-income countries. This include that the NDP has helped to facilitate and support governments of middle-income countries in formulating policies and action plans addressing structural obstacles and access gaps for poor, marginalized and vulnerable groups and that the NDP has demonstrated its adaptive ability in engaging in new thematic areas to stay relevant with the progressive positioning at sub-national and local levels to support last mile challenges. So with regard to the recommendations and our actions. So the evaluation also makes some important recommendations. The NDP welcomes these recommendations and I will briefly outline our response to them. For recommendation one, rethinking the income-based approach. Noting that the decision on income-based approach for allocation of regular resources for mix is a matter for the executive board, the NDP will undertake an analysis and present options for consideration to possibly alter the GNI-based methodology for location of regular resources as part of the process for the development of the integrated budget and the resource plan for the next strategic plan twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-five. Recommendation two, balance the program portfolios in middle-income countries. The NDP acknowledges the need for a balanced portfolio in mix through sort leadership combined with a high programmatic impact. Our programmatic interventions are guided by national development plans and the national priorities and government requests, supported by context analysis and the theories of change. The NDP will rule out corporate, flagship project, products and the solutions, leveraging expertise across the UN system while capitalizing our efforts to push for systems transformation, innovation, including through accelerated labs. And the NDP also launched an SDG finance web platform where tools and experts for public and private financing will be available. On recommendations three, the NDP to sustain its governance and institutional support. The NDP appreciates the evaluation's recommendation that it should maintain its focus on the efforts to build inclusive and accountable institutions and strengthen institutional reform. The NDP will therefore support the middle-income countries through prioritizing accountability and transparency as integral to, to national COVID nineteen response and recovery, working with relevant UN entities and partners. The NDP will be drawing on existing and new partnerships to deliver advisory support and the tools on digital governance. And we will also be developing adaptive learning programs and tools to localize the SDGs. On recommendation four, consolidate and sustain gains achieved under the environment, natural resource management and climate change. The NDP supports the recommendation to leverage domestic and other finances to achieve scale in environment and energy initiatives. The NDP will support the development of a scale-up environment and energy programs in partnership with the private sector, IFIs and other UN agencies. The NDP will deliver a COVID nineteen two point zero offer that tackles the challenges and meets the needs and aspirations of middle-income countries in green recovery. And recommendation five, establish a cooperative norms for implementing private sector initiatives. We recognize the need for scaling up our work with the private sector and for risk-informed approaches. The NDP will provide the services to support small and the medium-sized enterprises in middle-income countries as part of the COVID nineteen response. The NDP will support the development of the SDG impact platform and the leverage innovative financing and partnership solutions. The NDP will also finalize the update of its policy for private sector due diligence and risk management with investments to build staff capacity. A very few words on COVID nineteen and our forward-looking offer. COVID nineteen is spreading rapidly around the world and its economic, socioeconomic impacts feed on the pre-pandemic vulnerabilities and inequalities across societies, which must be addressed if countries are to build a more resilient future from the perspective of sustainable and the people-centered development. And as immediate COVID response, the NDP has provided support to middle-income countries through its technical role for the UN socioeconomic response and the NDP's COVID nineteen offer one point zero and two point zero now, beyond the recovery towards twenty thirty, which is a focus on governance, protecting people, digital disruption and the green recovery. Looking ahead, we have identified the three shifting trends which will reshape our development support to middle-income countries post-COVID nineteen. First, a substantial shift in social expectations and social contract dynamics, which may require NDP work in fragile, middle, fragile, middle-income country contexts to expand as well as, you know, to reflect a deeper move towards rule of law, human rights and the rights-based office. The second trend, the substantive development pathways for middle-income countries are moving towards accelerated energy transitions and the nature-based solutions. This will require a focus on new and innovative financial instruments and expanded private sector partnerships. The third trend, there is a risk of debt overhang and the fiscal stress continue, continuing in middle-income countries. The NDP will need to engage with these implications, including scoping forces of fiscal space, protecting the post and the most vulnerable groups, expanding social assistance and insurance schemes and restoring livelihoods. So in conclusion, the NDP support will need to help countries address the lasting effects of the post-COVID nineteen development trajectory while continuing to maintain a focus on the needed structural transformation, resilience and leaving no one behind the contexts that are currently unfolding in middle-income countries worldwide. We're committed to implementing the evaluations recommendations to improve our support to middle-income countries to address these challenges. Thank you very much for your attention.
I, I thank Mr. Ding for his presentation and his response. I will now open the floor for comments and questions from colleagues. The floor is open.
Sir, I have the distinguished delegate of the US, Charles Chang.
I give the floor to the distinguished delegate from the United States.
Thank you, Mr. President. And a thank you, Mr. Garcia, for your presentation of Independent Evaluation Office's annual report, which reflects IEO staff's excellent work. We would also like to thank Mr. Shi for his presentation of the management's response. Mr. Garcia, the United States warmly welcomes you as the new IEO director. We look forward to working with you. We would also like to take this opportunity to thank the former IEO director, Mr. Invenaidi, who he's invaluable contributions to bringing IEO's work to a higher international standard. And Mr. President, the board has been a strong supporter of IEO and its work. The revised evaluation policy, which the board approved recently, calls for an increase in resource allocation to IEO. We would like to hear from management and IEO whether the point three percent target has been fulfilled and how IEO is using allocated resources to strengthen its work, including oversight of the quality of decentralized program evaluations at country level. Over the years, the board has been concerned about UNDP country offices' ability to conduct independent, impartial and high-quality program evaluations at country level. While management has taken actions to address this weakness, majority of decentralized evaluations quality remains low. We commend management's action to address this concern, including the establishment of an evaluation expert roster last year. We would like to hear how management plans to use this roster to improve decentralized evaluation quality. Will country offices deploy expert evaluators to oversee their decentralized evaluations? How about country offices' resource allocation dedicated to evaluations? Is there a target for that? We recommend UNDP consider conducting a thematic synthesis of evaluations to enable evaluators to gather results from across evaluation reports. In addition, we strongly urge management to continue to institute a culture of evaluation throughout country offices, including using evaluation as a criterion in country directors' performance appraisal. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished delegate from the United States. It appears that there are no further member states or, 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 or member of the board asking for the floor. So I'm going to ask the secretariat for a response.
Sir, I do have Guatemala.
Okay, Guatemala, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Apologies, I came in late there. So I just want to thank very quickly the, the IEO for the, for the report and the management response, including the five recommendations contained therein. Guatemala values the ability of the UN system to contribute to the national efforts of middle-income countries to achieve the SDGs and we generally support the recommendations and this discussion as another step towards reaching this goal, noting that middle-income countries are noting that middle-income countries are still at home to 73% of the world's people living in poverty. We believe that achieving significant development gains in middle-income countries will lead to a multiplier effect that will benefit the entire system. As more middle-income countries achieve their development goals and the system becomes stronger through increased development cooperation, self-stuff cooperation, quality dialogue and partnerships with those countries, so too does the capacity to address development issues in LDCs and to reach the furthest behind. We also must remember that any strategy to assist middle-income countries must be flexible and dynamic, noting that the different levels of development within that category and noting that over the past 15 years, 35 low-income countries have transitioned to the middle-income country category. Conversely, we must also be aware that the COVID-19 pandemic threatens those development gains and threatens to bring countries back into the LDC category. The system must be equipped to help mitigate this risk. In Guatemala, one of the areas we're most focused on is addressing food security and nutrition. We certainly hope that UNDP, through its strengthened approach to supporting middle-income countries, can continue and increase its assistance to provide us in solving this national emergency. We note with concern in this regard that hunger and malnutrition have been increasing in many countries, most of those, 44 out of 65, being middle-income countries and countries that rely heavily on international trade and primary commodities. In this regard, we further encourage UNDP to continue strengthening their capacity to support middle-income countries by implementing the recommendations in the report and further analyze the possibility of employing differentiated approaches to program. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished delegate from Guatemala. This time, if we have no further.
We do, sir, we do. Apologies. We just got a hand raised from the distinguished delegate of Belgium, sir.
Okay, Belgium, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I want to make just a very short comment, first to add our voice to the questions raised by our distinguished colleague from the USA on the decentralized evaluations and their quality, with an additional question, which is this difference in appreciation of the qualifier moderately satisfactory. We each time get a different perspective on this, where the Office on Evaluation says that that's not a sufficient level of quality that we can expect from UNDP, whereas the management response usually includes it to calculate the percentage of evaluations that are considered good enough. Thank you very much.
I thank the distinguished delegate from Belgium. This time, Mr. Secretary, do we have any further member state asking for the floor?
Not this time, sir, not this time. So you can go back to the panelists.
Thank you. So can we go to the secretariat for a response? Would it be Mr. Deng or Mr. Garcia? Or both?
As most of the questions were directed to management, I would be happy to sit the floor to Mr. Shi and continue after that.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, distinguished delegates from the US, Guatemala and Belgium. As I noted in my statements, the management has met its commitments to provide the resources, the evaluation policy, and for 2019 as well as for 2020. So we definitely take this commitment very seriously. And in terms of concern about the country offices' capacity to conduct the quality and independent evaluations and the use of lost, you know, expert lost. I think it is a reality that the conduct of quality and independent evaluation depends on actions at country level and regional level. And because the UNDP is a project funded largely and the resources for evaluation needs to be budgeted in these programs and projects. Sometimes in the implementation phase, there are challenges. You know, we see that evaluations are very often lumped in the last quarter of the year. So if there are any delay, then these plans can get disrupted. And another challenge is equality valators with appropriate language skills, especially beyond English and Spanish. So I think this is the kind of challenges we seek to address through the expert lost. And to answer specifically to the US's question, our target for resource allocation for decentralized evaluation is 1% of the program expenditure. At this time, we have just exceeded over half of that, 52%, I believe. So we have some ways to go, but the trend is good. Right? From the last year to this year, we have increased by $3 million. So we definitely will need more work on this, but we take this very seriously. And I think the coach of evaluation, as the US mentioned, is also important to management. Evaluation is not just a question of compliance. Evaluation is an opportunity to learn from what has been done and to improve what will be done. So I think we have a very heightened awareness of this among senior management. And we definitely will, you know, take more efforts to make sure that this kind of understanding and awareness permeates through the ranks. And I think the question on the quality of evaluation that Belgium raised there, I think it is very legitimate a question, right? You know, I think we definitely are not satisfied with the current state, where 26% is unsatisfactory and a percentage of the satisfactory ones are moderate. So we recognize the distance we needed to go. So we are with you on this and we will work towards a better outcome in terms of evaluation quality. Now, on the Guatemala's question on middle-income country challenges, we fully recognize that. And that's why in our management response, we did highlight the diversity of middle-income countries. And I think the question on resource allocation is a complex one. So we will do our best to provide options to the board for consideration. And as we know, the Chair of IOSIS has written to Secretary General to ask for, you know, alternative means to look at financing, for, you know, development financing for SITs. And she has requested of the UN to come up with a different approach, such as a vulnerability-based approach, right, to look at the resource allocation. So we will take all this into account and provide the options to the board for consideration. And in terms of differentiated approach for mix, as we noted in our management response and everything, all what we do, we take national ownership very seriously, right? Our work is to support national development priorities. So we will work very closely with national governments and the partners to make sure that we address, you know, their national development priorities in the context that suits their priority needs. We have a differentiated approach to addressing the development challenges. So we'll stop here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Garcia, you want to add anything?
Yes, Mr. President, thank you very much. I want to start by thanking the delegate of the United States of America for their support to the independent evaluation function. And I really look forward to working with you collaboratively and really build on the good foundations led by my predecessor, Invenaidi. I want to refer to the important issue of the quality of decentralized evaluations. As identified in the annual report, only 55% of the planned decentralized evaluations are implemented at the end of the year. That means that evaluations, decentralized evaluations, should be taken more seriously by UNDP management at country level, so that accompanying a country program document with the corresponding evaluation plan can orient them in whether they are achieving or not the expected development outcomes as agreed with the national government. In that regard, we have provided improved guidelines for decentralized countries and evaluations. But apparently, and we are happy to see the uptake of these guidelines. However, I am of the opinion that more needs to be done. And now, the Independent Evaluation Office, without losing its independence, is proposing a closer engagement with UNDP management and to participate in what are called PAX or Program Appraisal Committees, which would bring earlier on in the process, the feedback of evaluation to see if the lessons learned from the previous evaluations have been reflected into the new country program document and to see if the new evaluation plan is feasible and evaluable. In addition to that, as you have seen, 43% of decentralized evaluations are the ones that are being conducted for the global funds, including the GEF. Why? Because those are mandatory and have the sufficient resources. Therefore, we are in conversation with UNDP senior management to improve the resource allocation and as a budget line for decentralized evaluations. And we expect to make progress very soon, so that these evaluations are sufficiently resourced to be conducted. And of course, we support the efforts to strengthen the roster of evaluations. And from the Independent Evaluation Office, we will collaborate on that effort. Additionally, we want to strengthen the system of quality assurance, so that we have a stronger system to support our program countries and country offices to strengthen the quality of decentralized evaluations. And we will continue using synthesis of evaluations to strengthen a culture of evaluation, transparency and learning. I want to, on the question of the delegate from Belgium, indeed, the Independent Evaluation Office aims for more satisfactory results of the evaluation and not only moderately satisfactory. And I want to thank the delegate from Guatemala for his support to the important findings and recommendations from the Independent Evaluation on Middle-Income Countries. And we are very glad to see that management has agreed with all the recommendations and that the process is being initiated for analysis and options of identifying alternatives to resource allocation beyond the GNI-based indices that we have right now. And that could be a very fruitful process with the engagement of the UNDP executive board members. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank you, Mr. Garcia, for your response. Colleagues, are there any further comments or questions?
Not at this time, sir.
It appears there are none. So I'd like to inform the executive board that a draft decision on Agenda Item 8 is being prepared and we will revert to this item later to adopt the decision. So this brings us to the end of the discussion on the evaluation reports. We will take a two-minute pause, change podium and go into the next section on the UNDP segment, we will look at the next section for consideration of the Agenda Item 9, which is UNDP Country Programs and Related Matters. So we will take a two-minute pause, just to change and get a glass of water and so on. Great colleagues, we will resume. And we will continue the UNDP segment with the consideration of the Agenda Item 9, UNDP Country Programs and Related Matters. And we will take up Country Programs Documents, 11 from 11 countries' programs, which are presented for your review and approval in line with the modified format and procedures agreed in Executive Board Decisions 2014/7. For the Africa region, we shall look at Swenye, Uganda. For the Asia-Pacific region, we should look at Indonesia and Timor-Leste. For the European and Commonwealth of Independent States region, we should look at Belarus, Bosnia and Herzegovina, Kazakhstan, Serbia, including the results and resources framework for Kosovo. Noting that referencing to Kosovo shall be understood to be in the context of Security Council Resolution 1244, 1999. Turkey, Turkestan, others. And for the Latin America region and Latin America and the Caribbean region, we shall look at Colombia. First, I would like to give the floor to Mr. Murad Wahaba, Acting Associate Administrator, to make an overall statement. Mr. Wahaba, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President and distinguished delegates. I have the honor to introduce the session on Country Programs and Related Matters, Item 9 of the Agenda. My statement today will cover three points briefly, if I may. First, the country programming and the challenges of COVID-19. Second, the new way of programming in the implementation of the UN Development System Reform. And third, the introduction of new country programs and extensions tabled for your consideration in this session. On COVID-19, Mr. President, the administrator has been very eloquent this morning, so I should not be adding to his comments, except to note that since the beginning of the emergency, UNDP, working with the UN country team under the guidance of the resident coordinator, has been very active in responding to the health and indeed to the development emergency of COVID-19. It is therefore with some pride perhaps, that six months later, we present 11 country programs that build on this experience of responding to COVID-19, hoping to support countries in charting together a path forward to building better forward in a post-pandemic world. We do this in three ways. First is an integration of UNDP's COVID-19 offer both First is an integration of UNDP's COVID-19 offer both one point O and two point O across program priorities to promote a whole-of-society response, placing the most vulnerable groups at the center of interventions. And indeed, as the Administrator has stressed this morning, we are focusing our responses on vulnerable groups, specifically indeed persons with disabilities and gender. Second, we also recognize that we are at a crossroads and that the necessity of our country programs is to build forward better in going beyond the status quo, if you like, anti-COVID infections. And third, recognizing the uncertainties that were so clearly announced this morning, we are designing our programs to be adaptive and to learn from experience and to respond to change. The second area I would like to highlight for your attention is on how we program differently under UN reform. As the year 2020 continues to be a transition year towards the full implementation of the UN Sustainable Development Cooperation Frameworks, we are making progress in ensuring the alignment of our efforts with other UN agencies under the coordination of the Resident Coordinator to deliver joint results. This includes testing new ways of working with the country teams to conduct joint analysis examining the integration of development issues and their links with one another. This also allows us to identify together as a country team priorities based on what the evidence tells us is required to achieve the SDGs. The Cooperation Framework, Mr. President, is the One Program Plan signed between country governments and the United Nations system to ensure national ownership while embodying the spirit of partnership which is at the core of the 2030 Agenda. And therefore, the rationale for the selection of UN priorities of the priorities of the individual members of the country team and their contextualization are outlined in the Cooperation Framework as indeed is the theory of change that we adapt for our own country programs. UNDP's country program documents in turn outlines our contribution to the Cooperation Framework and it is submitted for your approval in the Executive Board. It is therefore important, in our view, that both documents are considered together for a holistic review of the UN and of the United Nations Development Programs Programming in Country. As we had committed previously, most notably in the January session of the Board, we have revised the Country Program Document Template for all new country programs, starting with those presented at this session. And we are therefore using the first section of the country programs to focus on UNDP's contributions to the Cooperation Framework, drawing on our comparative advantages to add value to the common United Nations country team results. We have learned from our evaluations, and I'm happy to note that my session comes after the one on evaluation, that this is an area where country program documents have needed strengthening in the past. We have taken these evaluations to heart and we hope that the modifications we have before you will bring back into focus our analysis of the rationale. These country program documents submitted for your consideration are therefore early iterations of the higher-quality programming following United Nations Development System Reform that we can expect to come to maturity in the course of 2021 as we test and as we apply lessons in the design, implementation, monitoring, and evaluation of this new generation of country programs and Cooperation Frameworks. Third, Mr. President, very briefly, because you have outlined them yourself, but let me turn to the eleven new country programs and extensions that are being presented for board consideration today. I would like to highlight that six country programs have been granted extensions in order to align with the UN Sustainable Development Cooperation Framework to ensure harmonization with national development plans or to allow further consultations on these Cooperation Frameworks and on the country programs. These are the first two-month extension of the country program for China, the first one-year extension of the country program for Bahrain, Cameroon, Guinea-Bissau, El Salvador, and Libya. Additionally, we seek the agreement of the Board, Mr. President, to continue to work within the existing country program document for Syria until a new one is presented in the next Executive Board Session of February twenty twenty-one. We need this time to continue engaging with all partners and to align with the strategic framework currently under preparation and of course with the country program documents of UNICEF and UNFPA. Table therefore for your consideration today are the following new country programs. For the Africa region, Esuweini and Uganda. For Asian Pacific, Indonesia and Timor-Leste. For Europe and the CIS, Belarus, Bosnia and Herzegovina, Kazakhstan, Serbia, including the Results and Resources Framework for Kosovo, noting that references to Kosovo shall be understood in the context of Security Council Resolution twelve forty-four of nineteen ninety-nine, Turkey and Turkmenistan. For Latin America and the Caribbean, Colombia. We are also offering for your consideration multi-year extensions of the country programs of Burkina Faso, Mauritius, and Seychelles. Mr. President, distinguished delegates, I look forward to your deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wahaba. I will then, we can, we will now begin to look at the regional programs. And I will now give the floor to Madame Aouna to present the to present the regional programs in Africa and introduce the country programs for Esuweini and Uganda. Aouna, you have the floor, please. Are you there, Aouna?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, distinguished members of the Executive Board and representatives of the governments of the Kingdom of Esuweini and the Republic of Uganda. Colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, really pleased today to present the country program documents for the Kingdom of Esuweini and the Republic of Uganda for approval. Both program documents have been formulated in close consultation with the respective governments and with a wide range of stakeholders. And I'm glad to also inform you that all the key principles that were laid out by my colleague, Mr. Kafba, have been taken into consideration in both documents. They have full alignment with the UN Sustainable Development Cooperation Frameworks and the national development strategies as well. The CPDs are informed by UNDP's comparative advantage and the principle that we leave no one behind. Mr. President, let me start with Esuweini. Esuweini, as a middle-income country, faces sluggish economic growth, a fiscal crisis, high levels of unemployment, poverty, and inequality. Extreme poverty and inequality are critical impediments to advancing sustainable development in this country. The country program document will invest in poverty reduction, environmental protection, and climate change as well as effective governance that will help the country address the structural challenges and weaknesses in order to achieve its ambitions. In line with the national strategy and the strategic roadmap for 2019 to 2022, the CPD prioritizes two key areas. Inclusive growth, inclusive economic growth that is built around the poverty environment nexus to support national efforts to leave no one behind, including efforts to scale up initiatives that will empower young people and women. The second one is efficient and participatory governance that is built around the whole-of-government approach to create an enabling policy environment in order to also support inclusive economic growth and build institutional capacities to integrate the Sustainable Development Goals into sectoral and national plans. And in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, the CPD incorporates post-COVID-19 recovery and resilience programming with special focus on informal workers, particularly women and youth and other vulnerable populations. We also have a special focus on small, medium enterprises who are severely affected. UNDP will tailor its engagement and work closely with partners to respond to changes that are induced by the pandemic. Mr. President, let me now turn to Uganda. Uganda has made significant gains in its socioeconomic progress towards a prosperous society as espoused in its Vision 2040. The country is endowed with vast potential that can be leveraged to power economic transformation that benefits all citizens. Over eighty percent of the population is under the age of thirty-five. This is a huge potential. Conducive climate and environment for sustainable tourism and agriculture are also a major feature of the country as well as industrialization and local economic development strategies that already exist. Building on these advantages, UNDP will focus on broader integrated transformational areas. The first is on inclusive governance with emphasis on with emphasis on advancing public sector reforms to strengthen institutional coherence and building and institutionalizing e-governance systems in the public sector for effective coordination, transparency, and accountability. The second on inclusive and sustainable growth, our support will focus on addressing constraints to build robust and integrated value chains in the agriculture, tourism, and mining sectors. We will support integrated, sustainable land management and restoration of degraded landscapes, promoting access to affordable renewable energy options and addressing resilience to climate and disaster risks. On COVID-19, Mr. President, Uganda is one of the countries that took aggressive measures early enough to respond to the pandemic. And UNDP has provided technical support on business continuity, on socioeconomic impact assessments, and recovery planning and response. UNDP will continue to review its country program documents to respond to emerging COVID-19-induced challenges and opportunities. Mr. President, distinguished members, we're expecting the Executive Boards to approve the CPDs for Esuweini and Uganda as well as the CPD extensions for Burkina Faso, Cameroon, Guinea-Bissau, Mauritius, and Seychelles. Let me end by taking this opportunity to thank you, Mr. President, and members of the Board for your continued support to the UNDP Regional Bureau for Africa, especially at this time of global crisis and huge uncertainties. I thank you, Mr. President, for your attention.
Thank you, Aouna, for your presentation. I will open the floor for comments and questions. I have three speakers, but I just wanted to make another, an observation myself. And when, you know, as you presented the Esuweini country program, I often, I continue to be almost baffled each time I hear of countries with poor, with high unemployment, significant poverty, et cetera. These countries, like my own, is defined as middle-income countries. And I continue to be on the side of saying we have to revisit how we define these categories of development for countries because we cannot have countries that are struggling such defined as middle income. And what goes with it is the price that you have. You are denied access to certain levels of concessional support. I will now open the floor for comments and I will give the floor to the permanent representative of Esuweini. Excellency, you have the floor, please.
Thank you, Mr. President, distinguished members of the Executive Board, representatives of the UNDP, colleagues and ladies and gentlemen. Let me begin by thanking the Assistant Director, the Assistant Administrator and Director of the United Nations Development Programs Regional Bureau for Africa, Ms. Aouna Azia-Konam for her eloquent presentation of the new country program for the Kingdom of Esuweini. The country program document is in full alignment with Esuweini's National Development Plan 2019-2022 and Strategic Roadmap 2019-2022 as well as Agenda 2030 and Agenda 2063. As shown in the presentation, the two interrelated pillars that the CPD focuses on are at the core of Esuweini's Vision 2022. Mr. President, the Kingdom of Esuweini is classified as a lower-middle-income country and yet it faces a number of challenges such as poverty, inequality, youth unemployment, and poor human development indicators. All these challenges need our urgent attention as the country repositions itself for growth in the wake of COVID-19 outbreak, which has negatively impacted the already fragile economy of our country. We are grateful for the technical and financial support provided by UNDP within the framework of the UN Response Plan. We look forward to partner with UNDP in the implementation of our National Post-COVID-19 Economic Recovery Plan. The plan to support on the management of natural resources and environment is key as our country is challenged by a recurrent climate change and Al Gore enjoys the droughts. And I must emphasize government's full commitment to climate change adaptation and resilience building. Government is also committed to closely work with UNDP in resource mobilization in order to ensure that CPD is fully implemented during the specified timeframe. We welcome the leadership of UNDP and the integrator role played in the process, working closely with the other UN agencies in the country. We also appreciate UNDP's renewed strategic offer in Africa, which is intended, with its intended aim to support African initiatives. We commit to work with UNDP on a number of strategic impact areas such as youth and women empowerment, climate change and adaptation, as well as the structural transformation of the renewed strategic offer under the new CPD. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the prominent representative of Esuweini and I give the floor to the prominent representative of Uganda. Excellency, you have the floor, please.
Mr. President, thank you for giving me the floor. Let me take this opportunity to thank Mr. Wahaba for his introductory remarks and Ms. Aouna, the Assistant Secretary General of UNDP and the head of the Regional Bureau for Africa. Mr. President, we are pleased with the longstanding partnership between the government of Uganda and UNDP. UNDP provided technical support to the design of the Uganda National Development Plan Three, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-five mandate in the UN Development System. Mr. President, just yesterday, second September, I had the opportunity to join the UN Country Team and the Prime Minister of Uganda to witness the signing of the UN Sustainable Development Cooperation Framework for Uganda, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. to witness the signing of the UN Sustainable Development Cooperation Framework for Uganda twenty twenty one to twenty twenty five. I was able to confirm that the cooperative framework was a joint effort of the UN Country Team and the first since the UN reform. I'm pleased to confirm that the new UNDP Country Program for Uganda aligns freely with the cooperation framework and responds to our development priorities. In line with the spirit of the UN reform, the UN Cooperation Framework serves as a critical, as a critical document. UNDP through its country program document will make significant contributions to the inclusive growth, transformational and inclusive governance, and sustainable management of natural resources. Mister President, I want to take this opportunity to thank UNDP for stepping in and providing critical support on e-governance to ensure business continuity following the COVID nineteen lockdown. The support has enabled key government institutions to continue to provide service, with nearest seventy percent of them able to function virtually. UNDP is providing critical support on recovery planning and response to minimize the impact of the pandemic on the population. In conclusion, I would like to confirm the commitment of the government of the Republic of Uganda to continue collaborating with UNDP during the implementation phase of the new counter program. I thank you.
My brother, Excellency Dunia for his remarks. Are you still in Kampala? And
I'm still in Kampala.
You are, lucky guy.
Thank you.
Good luck. I will give the floor to His Excellency and the Permanent Representative of Gambia for his statement. Excellency, you have the floor.
Sir, is the distinguished representative of Burkina Faso has requested?
Is it Burkina Faso?
Yes, apologies.
I apologize. Burkina Faso, I apologize, you have the floor.
Now, President, it's always a pleasure to see you residing over our works. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I would like to congratulate the administrator and his team for the brilliant report that has been presented to us. We shall address all the concerns of the moment, but also the challenges that remain to be met in particular. And I want to congratulate Mrs. Ahuna and Mr. Wahab for their presentation on the country program. Mister President, while this session has enabled us to appreciate the importance of multilateralism through the role played by the United Nations system since the outbreak of COVID nineteen pandemic, it is also an opportunity to recall the challenges faced by many countries already in difficulties, such as my country Burkina Faso, that is landlocked. Indeed, Burkina Faso is already facing enormous security and humanitarian challenges as a result of terrorism with an unprecedented humanitarian crisis with nearly one million IDP and more than two million people in food insecurity. This situation has been exacerbated by the COVID nineteen, COVID nineteen pandemic in the country since March twenty twenty. The country remains relatively spare. However, the effects of this health crisis have had repercussion in all socioeconomic sector with a reduction in the growth rate from six point three percent to two percent in twenty twenty, a drop in public revenue, which will rise to about five percent of GDP against the three percent initially expected. In response to these challenges, the government has set up the emergency program for the Sahel and has adopted a response plan to curb the speed of COVID nineteen pandemic and mitigate its adverse effect on the economy. How to successfully finance the emergency program for the Sahel and the National Response Plan for COVID nineteen, Burkina Faso is at a crossroads, and this is a great challenge, which it cannot take up without the support of international community. In this exercise, the United Nations system has a major role to play. Burkina Faso therefore welcomes with great satisfaction the approval of the extension of two years of the country program and cites this opportunity to reiterate its gratitude to UNDP, to the administrator for his support, and all audience of development and peace building. I thank you very much.
I thank my dear.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, brother, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Borala.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ahuna, would you like to respond, please?
Mister President, in the interest of time, I would only like to say a big thank you to the, the speakers on, on each of the countries and the support that we continue to receive in this partnership.
I thank you so much for your consideration and thank you very much for your presentation. Colleagues, excellencies, this concludes our review of the country program documents for Esuatini and Uganda in accordance with the Executive Board's decision twenty fourteen slash seven. May I take it that these country programs, doc, program documents may be approved? I, I see no objections for, so it, so it is so decided. Congratulations. If I hear no objection, further objections with, I also take it that the Executive Board wishes me, wishes to approve the two-year extension of the country programs for Burkina Faso from first January twenty twenty one to thirty first December twenty twenty two, and the three-year extension of the country programs for Mauritius and and Seychelles for the and Seychelles for the, from January twenty twenty one to the thirty first December twenty twenty three, as presented in document DP slash twenty twenty slash twenty slash two three, sorry. That's DP slash twenty twenty slash two three. I see no objections. It is so decided. I now invite Ms. Ms. Miss Keeney, Jean, Assistant Administrator and Director of Regional Bureau for Asia and the Pacific to introduce the country programs, documents for Indonesia. Getting, getting there is somebody. So, yeah. Indonesia, Indonesia and Timor-Leste. And if, if anyone with their mics on, it would be helpful because it starting.
Yeah, I think it's, it's fine now.
Sorry?
It's fine, it's fine, sir.
Okay, thank you. Adam, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mister President. Mister President, members of the Executive Board, distinguished delegates, thank you to the Executive Board for your continued support to UNDP in Asia and the Pacific. The region has really been in the maelstrom of the COVID nineteen pandemic, and your support to us during these period is so critical. I am very pleased to introduce the new country programs for Indonesia and Timor-Leste for twenty twenty one to twenty twenty five. As noted by the Associate Administrator, the country program for China has been extended for two months, as recommended by the government, following the postponement of its review to the next session of the board. The development of the two country program documents before you engaged a broad range of national and international partners whose contributions we deeply value. All comments provided have been given full consideration. As announced at the informal session at the request of the government of Timor-Leste, a corregendum was added to their country program document to more accurately reflect in one paragraph very recent developments in the country. At the request of the government of Indonesia, a corregendum was added to their country program document to sharpen the language related to violence against women and girls. The country programs for Indonesia and Timor-Leste reflect the diversity of a rapidly evolving region with significant opportunities for further sustainable development. Both countries also fail, face intensified challenges. While the absolute numbers are different, the proportion of poor and those at risk of falling back into poverty is rising, given the pandemic. Combined with climate crises, we see eroding development gains and mounting vulnerabilities at much faster rates than before. Access to technology and digital innovation is hugely uneven and is driving new inequalities. The two new country programs are fully aligned with the respective governments' national development priorities and plans, the twenty thirty agenda and UNDP's strategic plan. They are derived from the UN Sustainable Development Cooperation Frameworks to ensure UN coherence and joint impact, as certified in writing by the resident coordinators. Each program has been informed also by quality evaluations and lessons learned. The COVID nineteen crisis provides the opportunity for a reset. These are countries looking to go beyond short-term recovery, to reduce growing inequalities, advance climate action, accelerate digital technology and innovations to drive the future of work and social protection, and to strengthen capacities and social cohesion. The governments have asked UNDP to support these forward-looking priorities while also addressing the more immediate severe impacts of the pandemic. The country programs will be adaptive and integrated to ensure a high acceleration to the SDGs. SDG acceleration in times like this can only be through an optimal choice of policies, investments, and institutional transformations. And this will be at the heart of UNDP's support to these countries to get back on track. Our CPDs for Indonesia and Timor-Leste support climate action as a key national priority. Tailored to context, UNDP will support the governments meet their global commitments, support disaster preparedness, and the protection of land and marine ecosystems. Support to economic transformation that is both sustainable and reduces poverty faster is a high priority in both country programs. In Indonesia, UNDP will support new economic models for growth and job creation, sustainable energy, leverage innovation and technology for the future of work, and facilitate the private sector to contribute more to the SDGs. In Timor-Leste, UNDP will help improve access to new economic opportunities and promote sustainable livelihoods, particularly for young people, to reduce their growing vulnerability. In Indonesia, you will note that innovation is placed at the outcome level to help accelerate the SDGs, including an emphasis on innovative financing, supported by UNDP's Innovative Financing Lab. In Timor-Leste, UNDP will support young entrepreneurs, establish new businesses as part of a small but growing digital economy and the future of work, and will do so also with the Accelerator Lab and with partners. Both country programs have been developed with a human rights and gender-sensitive programming approach. With the government's trust in UNDP, they address support to new and evolving governance capabilities, both nationally and subnationally, to introduce these big issues for a more sustainable and inclusive development going forward. So it truly leaves no one behind. The country programs for Indonesia and Timor-Leste, Mister President, are centered around extending and scaling public and private partnerships nationally and globally. UNDP will address these issues in close collaboration with the UN country teams and with our partners. To close, Mister President, let me recognize the deep trust and support from the governments of Indonesia and Timor-Leste, and thank ambassadors Perez and Ambassador Koba, who are here with us. We look forward to the approval of the country programs for Indonesia and Timor-Leste by the Executive Board. Thank you, Mister President.
I'll direct the Asian Pacific Region Bureau, and I will now open the floor for comments, and I invite the permanent representative of Timor-Leste to make a statement.
Thank you very much, Mister President, for giving me the floor, you and to the members of the board, also to ASG Kanib Wignaraja and the UNDP team. I would like to start by expressing appreciation to UNDP for its constructive engagement in Timor-Leste and for the inclusion of the corregendum updating the reference in paragraph twenty eight of the CDP. Timor-Leste very much welcomes the country program document for twenty twenty one to twenty twenty five as it complements the supper and supports, pardon me, government efforts towards the implementation of the SDGs and the twenty thirty agenda, and is aligned with our national development plan and contributes to specific strategic priorities of the United Nations Sustainable Development Framework that was adopted in May of this year. As a young nation, Timor-Leste has made considerable efforts, has progressed in our sustainable development. However, we continue to face challenges which have been exacerbated by COVID nineteen pandemic. In this regard, it is foreseen that UNDP's comparative advantage and country program document can make an important contribution, as was referred by ASG Wignaraja, to A, reducing vulnerability to poverty and promoting employment through the youth innovation hub, business incubators, and livelihood promotion in coastal communities; B, by building resilience to climate change through disaster risk management, climate change adaptation and climate resilience infrastructure, community-based natural resource management and policy support; and lastly, to accountable governance through support for municipal strategic planning, judicial reform, and access to justice, and through the use of digital technology to improve access to and reach of government services and facilitate connectivity, including to banking facilities. The use of digital technology will also be an important mechanism to support effective prevention and further response to the COVID nineteen pandemic. To conclude, Mister President, will you reiterate Timor-Leste's appreciation to you and the Executive Board and the UNDP for this opportunity to discuss the CDP and to UNDP for its important contribution to Timor-Leste development? And we look very much forward to continued cooperation on the implementation of the CDP. Once again, thank you very much.
Can you hear me now?
Perfectly, Excellency.
Yes, yes. I thank the permanent representative of Timor-Leste for her statement, and I'll give the floor to the permanent, the Deputy Permanent Representative of Indonesia. You have the floor, please, sir.
Thank you, Excellency. Excellency, Mr. Chair, Assistant Assistant Secretary General Kanib Wignaraja, members of the Executive Board, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to take this opportunity, opportunity to reiterate our thanks to the UNDP put in New York and Jakarta for their tireless efforts and close coordination with our government in formulating the country program document for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty five. with our government in formulating the country program document for 2021-2025. We have enjoyed strong and close UNDP-Indonesia relations in the past. And the CPD will provide a strong foundation for the next five years to help fulfill Indonesia's developmental priorities and support the achievement of the Agenda 2030 in Indonesia. Let me share some pertinent points for today's meeting. First, the CPD coincides with Indonesia's Medium-Term National Development Plan, or we call it RPGMN for 2020 to 2024. We believe partnership with the UNDP is essential to ensure delivery of services to achieve inclusive human development, economic transformation, resilience to climate change and disasters, and innovation for accelerating the achievement of SDGs. Second, the CPD comes at a critical juncture as it was formulated at the height of COVID-19 global pandemic that has reversed various hard-won developmental gains. As a result, the CPD has taken up these latest challenges both to address the pandemic and its economic and social impacts. Lastly, allow me to reemphasize that Indonesia values deeply the commitment of UNDP to support Indonesia's development objectives and putting forward the principle of national ownership and leadership. Thank you.
I thank the deputy permanent, I thank the deputy permanent representative of Indonesia for his statement. And I'm wondering if the Assistant Administrator, would you like to have a response or final words?
No, Mr. President, just to thank the board and the two ambassadors. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your consideration. This concludes our review of the country program documents for Indonesia and Timor-Leste. In accordance with the Executive Board Decision 2014/7, may I take it, colleagues, that the country program documents may be approved? There is no objections. So decided. I now give the floor to Ms. Marjana Kolsavick, Assistant Administrator and Director for Regional Bureau for Europe and the Commonwealth of Independent States to introduce the country program documents for Belarus, Bosnia and Herzegovina, Kazakhstan, Serbia, including the results and resources framework for Kosovo, noting that references to Kosovo shall be understood to be in the in the context of the Security Council Resolutions 1244-1999. Turkey and Turkistan are also included. I understand that the regional director would like to present, because there are so many countries, present the report in a sort of overview of the country grouping. Madam, you have the floor.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Mr. President, distinguished members of the executive board, as was mentioned, I have the great honor to present six UNDP country programs from the region of Europe and the Commonwealth of Independent States for the Republic of Belarus, Bosnia and Herzegovina, the Republic of Kazakhstan, the Republic of Serbia, Turkey, and Turkmenistan. The CPD for Serbia includes a results and resources framework for Kosovo. And I'm noting again that references to Kosovo shall be understood to be in the context of UN Security Council Resolution 1244. At the outset, I would like to thank all national and international partners for the excellent cooperation and their substantive engagement in consultations and preparations of these country programs. Even though all mentioned countries with CPDs are presented today are now in the upper-middle income category and have very high levels of human development, there remain a number of challenges that impact their economic, social, and environmental sustainability. There has been much progress over the last decade in terms of investing in people's capacities, institutional development, and creating stronger democratic institutions. Policymakers increasing the focus today on persistent inequalities, social exclusion, vulnerabilities, and social cohesion, as well as on mega trends like migration, urbanization, and climate crisis. The attention is also shifting more towards long-term perspectives and multi-sectoral responses in order to ensure that growth is sustainable, inclusive, and sufficiently dynamic to escape from middle-income country traps. The country programs presented today distinctly outline UNDP's contribution to its nationally appropriate solutions. They are closely aligned with national development priorities and strategies. All CPDs built on the findings and recommendations of independent evaluations all are fully aligned with the UN Cooperation Frameworks, as was mentioned by the Associate Administrator at the outset of this session, and all are based on extensive consultations with the partners and civil society and are informed by lessons learned emerging from UNDP's internal program and project-level monitoring framework. Mr. President, the finalization of the draft CPDs presented today coincided with the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic. The documents therefore include policy and program interventions to address socioeconomic impact of COVID-19 in both the short and the longer term. You will note a stronger focus on employment and livelihoods of vulnerable groups, access to social services and social protection, disaster risk reduction, and financing strategies. Another common feature of the draft CPDs is the systematic emphasis of economic and political empowerment of women, as well as the integration of specific actions and approaches that would benefit women in all programmatic outcomes across the CPDs. The key areas of engagement are youth, developing entrepreneurship, skills, and knowledge for future jobs. The new CPDs have an expanded focus on green and inclusive economy, strengthening national capacities for nature protection, adaptation and mitigation in terms of climate change, and supporting the countries to turn the environmental and climate change challenges into economic opportunities, as was emphasized by the administrator this morning. Leveraging digital transformation as a sustainable development pathway and harnessing innovation as a driver of development underpin UNDP's programmatic approach in all six country programs, as is the spirit of NextGen UNDP. Finally, all CPDs rely on collaborative platforms and partnerships with governments, civil society, youth organizations, media, research community, private sector and startups, international financing institutions, and of course, our partners from the UN family and national development actors. Hand in hand, we strive to accelerate necessary change and transformation in the region. The full extent of UNDP's programmatic outputs, partnerships, and management priorities were presented in detail at the executive board informal last week. As time is short today, I will therefore just broadly summarize the core areas where we see UNDP's role as a particularly significant one in the mentioned countries. First, economic development based on green and inclusive growth. Second, implementation of climate change mitigation and adaptation measures. Third, development of an effective digital ecosystem. Fourth, fuller participation of vulnerable groups in socioeconomic life. Five, as I mentioned, political and economic inclusion of women. And last but not least, building trust and mutual accountability through the rule of law, rights, and duties agenda. Mr. President and distinguished members of the board, we expect that in the next few years, our work will be shaped by the consequences of the current pandemic. Its devastating impact on the economies in the region is already becoming evident. UNDP's focus will be firmly on the most vulnerable, and every effort will be made to maintain stream and emphasize measures mitigating the effects of the crisis and to support governments in the management of their response. The anticipated financial envelope of the six CPDs together is 690 million US dollars, with 10 million less than 2% coming from the UNDP regular resources. Government co-financing constitutes one-third of all planned resources, a testament to UNDP's long and successful track record and governmental buy-in and commitment. The remaining funds will be mobilized from UNDP's multilateral and bilateral donors, vertical funds, IFIs, and the private sector. The CPDs are an ambitious attempt at identifying priority initiatives and programs that the country offices will undertake. At the same time, we all know that planning a five-year program must allow for flexibility and adaptation in the rapidly changing world of today. Therefore, UNDP's offer will continue to evolve as countries identify new priorities around implementation of SDGs and as the new UNDP strategic plan takes shape. I'm grateful to the executive board for its consideration of the six draft CPDs for Belarus, Bosnia and Herzegovina, Kazakhstan, Serbia, Turkey, and Turkmenistan, and look forward to your continued partnership and support in these countries and in the European Central Asia region as a whole. I thank you very much.
I thank the regional director for Europe and Commonwealth States. And I will invite comments and questions from the membership. I now invite the Deputy Permanent Representative of Belarus to
Yeah, it's the PR, sir.
The permanent representative of Belarus to take the floor.
Mr. President, Excellencies, distinguished executive board members, dear colleagues, the Republic of Belarus considers UNDP as our strategic development partner. We highly value a longstanding and constructive partnership between UNDP and the relevant Belarusian authorities, authorities, as well as other stakeholders. For many years, Belarus has invested in socially oriented strategies. And as a result, in 2019, our country transitioned to an upper-middle income country. We thank UNDP Office in Belarus for valuable assistance provided to us while tackling the COVID-19 pandemic challenges. The government of the Republic of Belarus is strongly committed to the continued development of four major spheres of national priorities: green transition for inclusive and sustainable growth, climate change mitigation and adaptation measures, effective digital ecosystem and innovations, and productive employment and decent incomes. The new UNDP program document for Belarus for 2021-2025 is focused on these four interrelated crucial clusters and is also fully aligned with Belarus's national strategy for sustainable development for the period until 2035. In order to ensure national ownership, the new country program document was developed in close consultations with national authorities and representatives of various stakeholders, as well as in very close cooperation with the UNDP Country Office and the Resident Coordinator. Belarus expresses its support to the country program document for 2021-2025 and looks forward to constructively engaging with UNDP in the course of its implementation. Let me conclude by reiterating our commitment to the effective, attentive, and efficient cooperation with UNDP at all levels. I thank you.
I thank the permanent representative of Belarus for his statement. And I give the floor to the distinguished representative of Turkey. You have the floor, please.
Thank you, Ambassador, for giving me the floor. I would like to thank you for this opportunity to speak to the executive board and of course, to regional director Agger for her overview of the country programs, including for Turkey. The longstanding cooperation between Turkey and UNDP dates back to the 1950s. And in the last two decades, Turkey has made great strides in inclusive and sustainable economic growth and improved its development profile. This has helped Turkey emerge as a global development and humanitarian actor. And of course, UNDP has been supportive in this process through technical assistance and resource mobilization, including during the implementation of the previous CPD. During this process, the SDG Impact Accelerator was launched and further strengthened in order to provide digital ID and sanitation for refugees. This SDG Impact Accelerator brought together government, private sector, civil society, and international community. UNDP's assistance has also been instrumental in the SDG integration in local service delivery and developing local climate change projects. UNDP has developed business models for digital transformation centers for SMEs targeting Turkish and Syrian-owned companies in Turkey. Our joint efforts to assist Syrians under temporary protection is a crucial aspect of our collaboration. As the nature of our efforts towards Syrians in Turkey evolved from humanitarian to socioeconomic development, UNDP's active engagement has become more fundamental. UNDP can achieve further impact on the ground by mobilizing additional funds in an efficient manner, particularly towards Syrians under temporary protection, as well as furthering its work on improving transparency and efficiency gains in line with the UN Development System reform. Together with UNDP, we will further our efforts to enhance the role and capacity of the Istanbul International Center for Private Sector in Development in the promotion of public-private partnership at the local, regional, and global level. We believe that UNDP will continue to work effectively towards improving the integration with other UN agencies on the ground, including the Resident Coordinator. I would like to thank you once again, and we look forward to the effective implementation of our new CPD. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I thank the Deputy Permanent Representative of Turkey for her statement. And I will return to the director to see if she wishes to make any response or final summary of responses to the questions.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just wish to thank again all our national and international partners who have greatly contributed to the development of the CPDs. I thank the colleagues for their statements and all representatives in New York and their teams for their always close and excellent cooperation. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
I thank you for your response. I thank you for your commitment. I know it's quite late in your part of the world at this time, so thank you for staying with us. Colleagues, this concludes our review of the country program documents for Belarus, Bosnia and Herzegovina, Kazakhstan, Serbia, including the results and resources framework for Kosovo, noting that references to Kosovo shall be understood to be in the context of the Security Council Resolutions 1244-1999. Turkey and Turkistan also in accordance with the Executive Board Decision 2014/7. May I take it, colleagues, that the country program documents may be approved? There appears to be no objections. So decided. Finally, my distinguished delegates and friends, we will now move to the Latin American Caribbean region. I will give the floor to Mr. Louis I will give the floor to Mr Luis Felipe Calvo, Assistant Administrator and Director for the Regional Bureau for Latin America and the Caribbean, to introduce the country programme for Colombia.
Thank you very much, Mr President. Distinguished members of the board, excellencies and colleagues, it is a pleasure to join you today to present the draft Country Programme Document for Colombia for the period 2021-2024. We are particularly grateful to the distinguished representatives of Colombia, particularly to Ambassador Fernandez de Soto and all his team and through him to all the authorities in the country for all the support we have received during the preparation of this document. This process has been demanding and very rigorous and it promises an integrated attention to important development challenges in the country, a country that is clearly on a solid development path and has recently joined the OECD but continues to face important structural problems. UNDP is honoured to continue supporting and deepening our partnership with Colombia through the new cooperation framework we present today. With a sustainable development agenda as our aspiration, the appropriation of the agenda at the national and sub-national levels requires interpreting the greatest challenges and obstacles faced by countries to achieve development. This is more important and complex than ever as the country and the region face the compounding impacts of the COVID pandemic. As everybody knows, Latin America and the Caribbean have become the epicentre of the pandemic, which has collapsed health systems, resulted in deep economic recession and strained social protection and fiscal systems. This is indeed a systemic crisis, a test for governance and as such requires a systemic response. The document we are presenting today is a result of extensive and intensive consultations led jointly with national authorities. The document is aligned fully with national priorities and the United Nations Cooperation Framework, as well as the UNDP Strategic Plan and points towards progress of the 2030 Sustainable Development Agenda. The strategy supported in this country programme focuses on the most disadvantaged regions and serves the most vulnerable populations based on gender, ethnicity and with a human rights focus and environmental sustainability. This country programme supports government efforts to stabilise and consolidate the territories affected by violence and poverty. The country programme that we are submitting for your consideration today responds to Colombia's development needs and challenges as a high-middle income country and is fully aligned with the national priorities established in the National Development Plan 2018-2022. Notwithstanding the significant progress made in consolidating itself as a country with a high human development index and precisely because of its middle-country status, Colombia today faces challenges integrating effective efforts to combine economic growth, peace, social progress and environmental sustainability throughout the territory. The country document we are presenting today aims at supporting Colombia through cross-cutting gender, ethnic, human rights approaches to consolidate the territories affected by violence and poverty, very solidly within the peace and legality policy followed by the government with a strong emphasis on the development of lagging regions. It also aims to integrate and reduce socio-economic vulnerable challenges for Venezuelan migrants, Colombian returnees and host populations and to strengthen institutional and technical capacities at national and local levels to accelerate the implementation of prioritised Sustainable Development Goals. Our hope is that we can support Colombia to stabilise and consolidate lagging behind territories, turn Venezuelan migration into an opportunity for development while advancing in the implementation of the 2030 Agenda. Of course, beside these priorities, it is necessary to strengthen social cohesion and livelihoods in the context of COVID-19 response. UNDP stands ready to support and mitigate the immediate effects of the pandemic while examining medium-term implications. I want to also emphasise all the leadership of our Resident Coordinator and the collaboration with other UN agencies, funds and programmes, particularly in the context of this document with UNFPA, with UNICEF, WFP, FAO, WHO, Pajo and UNODC. We are maximising synergies to ensure consistency in our interventions. Mr President, for the period 2021-2024, this country programme has allocated 300 million US dollars, out of which only 808,000 dollars are UNDP regular resources. A total of 142 million US dollars will be financed through government cost sharing and 157 million dollars are expected to be mobilised by the Country Office from other sources. Mr President and distinguished delegates, I now submit for your consideration the Country Programme Document for Colombia, which would allow us to continue our development cooperation with the country. I welcome your comments and questions. Thank you very much for your attention.
I thank Felipe for his presentation. For his presentation and I will open the floor, but at this moment, do we have anybody, Jordi?
We do have the distinguished Permanent Representative of Colombia, sir.
Indeed. I give the floor to the Permanent Representative of Colombia.
Thank you, Mr President, excellencies, members of the bureau, of the UNDP Executive Board. I would like to express on behalf of the Government of Colombia our gratitude for the approval of the Country Programme Document and this second ordinarisation of the Executive Board. The Government of Colombia has been deeply committed to the reform process of the United Nations Development System and it is worth noting that in the UNDP Colombia team we have found strong support for state reform. On March 19, my government and the UNDP signed the New Cooperation Framework for Sustainable Development 2020-2023 and this is the main instrument to guide cooperation with the UN system for the next few years. That is going to happen in three areas of interest: stabilisation, peace with legality, migration as a factor of development and acceleration of catalytic SDGs. In response to the reform mandates, the Government of Colombia, the Office of the Resident Coordinator and the UNDP Office formulated during the semester of this year, the new country programme for the period 2021-2024. In this context, I would like to reiterate our recognition for the leadership ambition of Luis Felipe Lopez Calva, Regional Director for Latin America and the Caribbean, and to Jessica Fajeta, the Coordinator Resident for her extraordinary leadership in the coordination of all the agencies in Colombia. Both played a very important role in the elaboration of this CPD. There is no doubt that this CPD is aligned with the strategic areas agreed as well with other key instruments, so that's the National Development Plan of my country, with the UNDP Global Strategy Plan and the recent National Strategy for the Response of COVID-19. The CDP leads to a territorial concentration of fieldwork that we hope will allow a greater impact. In these areas, the Government of Colombia is already making an important inter-institutional coordination effort at national and territorial levels. The Government of Colombia recognises UNDP as a key ally to support national efforts in responding to the various challenges that my country faces in terms of sustainable development. UNDP's mandate to reduce poverty and inequalities, coupled with its expertise on the ground, represents a true competitive advantage with add-value for our government. We deeply wish that UNDP continue to be the lead agency of the country team in Colombia for the implementation of the reform. This in order to minimise duplication of activities and resources and well as to promote inter-agency work under a demand approach based on the priorities of the national government. I am grateful once again for the word of all those who made this new country programme document for Colombia possible. Thank you very much.
I thank the distinguished Permanent Representative of Colombia for his statement. And as we have no further statements from members of the floor, from members of the board, Felipe, would you like to respond?
No, just want to thank all the delegates and certainly Ambassador Fernandez de Soto for his support and his kind words.
Thank you, Felipe, and thank you for your consideration. Colleagues, this concludes our review of the country programme documents for Colombia. In accordance with Executive Board Decision 2014/7, may I take it that the country programme document may be approved? There is no objection, so decided. Congratulations. Finally this time, if I hear no objections, may I also take it that the Executive Board wishes to take note of the first two-month extension of the country programme for China and the first one-year extension of the country programme for Bahrain, Cameroon, El Salvador, Guinea-Bissau, Libya. These are already approved by the Administrator and presented in document DP/2020/23 I see no objections. It is so decided. This, distinguished colleagues, brings us to the consideration of agenda, the end of consideration of agenda item nine, UNDP's country programmes and related matters. This is the end of the day's proceedings and I bring, unless Jordi, do you have any housekeeping?
No, sir, nothing. Thank you very much.
I bring this meeting to a close for the day. The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.